Afternoon and welcome to the October 11th, 2022 Apopka Planning and Zoning Commission. If you will please join me with a moment of silent prayer and a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a public comment, period, at the beginning of the meeting for any items or anything that the public wishes to speak on that is not included in our agenda. Is there anyone here today that wishes to speak on a matter that's not included on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Okay, we have the approval of the minutes of the planning commission held meeting June 14th, 2022. Anyone have any questions?
No. Are we going to approve both at the same time or one at a time?
We can. We will also, single approval for the minutes of the commission held July 12th, 2022.
Did somebody make a motion?
Yeah. If anybody has any questions, if not, you can go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Okay, I move that they be approved.
I'll second them.
Motion by Commissioner Lando, a second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. First public hearing will be a comprehensive, small-scale, future land use amendment, 3207 Claricona Road. Owners, 3207 Claricona Road LLC. Applicants, Veeland and Associates, PA, care of Sidney L. Veeland III. Location is east of Claricona Road, west of State Road 414, and north of Stone Road. So I guess Ms. Sanchez is not going to give this presentation.
She is not here.
Okay.
Unfortunately, she is not able to be here. So this is Roxanne Reed with the Planning and Zoning Division, and I'm taking her place.
Very poorly, I'm sure, but I will struggle through and make do the best we can. The first case is the recommended approval of future land use map amendment from agriculture to industrial for 3207 Clarcona Road. As you can see, this is east of Clarcona Road, west of State Road 414, and north of Stone Road. And the map, or the size of the project is 10.08 acres. The proposed future land use designation of industrial is compatible with the area because of adjacent properties to the south that also have industrial, future land use designations, and there is a rezoning application that will immediately follow this one. The Development Review Committee has recommended approval of this change in land use, and the recommended motion for the planning commission is to find the proposed change in future land use from agricultural to industrial, consistent with the Comprehensive Plan Land Development Code, and based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and the exhibits.
All right, thank you. Anyone have questions of staff? Is the applicant here? Do they have a presentation?
Good afternoon. Sid Veeland, 1540 International Parkway, Lake Mary. I don't have a presentation, but I'm happy to answer questions if anyone has any.
Any of the members have any questions of the applicant?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I have a question. Did you have a proposed plan for the industrial-type use that this property would be using? And the economic impact, maybe how many jobs you expected to be created?
The, this is actually a continuation and a growth of a facility that has been there for many years. It's the Randall family of companies, which started with Randall Mechanical, and now it's grown to a group of 19 companies. So the, you know, the various companies, you know, have fairly large employment impact in the city of Apopka, but essentially, we, you know, we have rezoned and changed the land use as the company has grown and moved north, and this is the last piece of what will be the total facility.
Great, thanks.
Any more questions? Thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion. Any discussion? Close the discussion, ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I find the proposed change in future land use from agricultural, one dwelling unit per five acres, to industrial, 0.6 floor area ratio maximum, consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code, and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the future land use amendment based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Motion by Commissioner Washington. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lando. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item number two is change of zoning for the same property, 3207 Claricona Road. Owner, 3207 Claricona Road. Applicant, Veeland and Associates, PA, care of Sidney L. Veeland III. And east Claricona Road, west of State Road 414, north Stone Road.
This is Roxanne Reed again with the Planning and Zoning Division. The request is to recommend approval of the change in zoning from agricultural to light industrial for this property at 3207 Clarcona Road. The tract size, again, is 10.8 acres, 10.08 acres. The subject property currently houses industrial warehouses, as you can see here, and the DRC recommended approval. And you'll see in the information here, it should say 3207 Clarcona Road. Unfortunately, it does say 1829 Plymouth-Sorrento Road, so that will need to be changed. And DRC did recommend approval of that, and then the recommended motion for the planning commission is to find the proposed 3207 Clarcona Road change of zoning, consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits. And that concludes our staff report.
Thank you. Any questions of staff or the applicant? Anyone here from the public to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion, and please disregard the 1829 and give 3207 Clarcona Road.
Yeah, I can do this one, Mr. Commissioner.
Commissioner Dumey.
I recommend a motion to find the proposed change of zoning consistent at 3207 Clarcona Road, consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code, and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed change of zoning from ag, agricultural, to IL, light industrial district, based on the findings and facts presented in the staff reports and exhibits.
Have a motion by Commissioner Dumey. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Norwood. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Right, item number three, change of zoning, Avian Point PD Amendment. Apopka Clear Lake Investments LLC, care of Frank Brombeck, owners. Applicant, NV5 Inc., care of Jason Mahoney, PE. Location is south of Peterson Road, north of Lust Road, and east of State Road 429.
Roxanne Reed with the Planning and Zoning Division. The request is to recommend approval of an amendment to ordinance number 2671, Avian Point PD and the accompanying master plan. This location is south of Peterson Road, north of Lust Road, and east of SR 429. The tract size is 127.21 acres. The original Avian Point PD master plan was approved by ordinance number 2433 and amended by ordinance number 2671, permitting up to 758 residential units. The applicant is requesting to increase the number of multifamily units by 56 units, changing the project density from 7.36 dwelling units to 7.95 dwelling units, and increasing the total number of multifamily units from 482 to 538. Then the maximum permitted density in this multifamily portion of the PD is 10 dwelling units per acre. The Development Review Committee finds the amendment consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code, and is recommending approval of the PD, and the recommended motion is to find the proposed amendment to the Avian Point planned development and master plan, consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code, and recommends approval of the PD based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report. And that concludes the staff report.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions of staff?
I have a question.
Commissioner Washington.
The, this project has been under development for quite a while, and it looks good. But what we're seeing here is that you're increasing the number of residences there.
Correct.
Since we're just fresh off of a tropical storm, and many people have been unfortunately affected by floodwaters, and I know there's a flood mitigation plan built into this project, I know that, but still, is it going to be adequate?
I am going to defer to the applicant. I believe they can answer those questions probably better than I can.
Well, okay.
Good evening. My name is Jason Mahoney with NV5, address 6200 Lee Vista Boulevard, number 400, Orlando, Florida. To address your question, yes, there is a FEMA flood zone over Clear Lake. All the development is done above.
Is your microphone on, sir?
I believe so. Can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
I don't know. How's it sound?
That's better.
I have to prove it on my side. You're good.
Okay.
Great. My wife probably wants that. The site, the whole project is designed for flood compensation, right? Each of the stormwater ponds was designed for a 100-year flood. As you can see, they all operated as expected during the storm. We have not heard any reports of anything abnormal occurring on-site.
Okay, so with the addition of the housing?
The addition of the housing is in multifamily, so it's just additional units within buildings that were already, already anticipated or contemplated. So it would not, doesn't, in actuality, impact the impervious area much at all.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions of staff or the applicant? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Does anyone here from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I find the proposed amendment to the Avian Point Plan Development and Master Plan, consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code, and recommend approval of the PD and master plan amendment. So, let me read the right one. I knew that we find the proposed amendment to the Avian Point Plan Development and Master Plan, consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code, and recommend approval of the Plan Development and Master Plan Amendment, based on the finding and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Lando. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Small-Scale Future Land Use Amendment, Ace Property. Ace Property LLC are the owners. Applicant is Liam Civil Engineering, care of Liam Kwang, Kwong, PE. Hope I got that right. Location, 447 Alabama Avenue.
This is Roxanne Reed, Planning and Zoning Division. The request is to recommend approval of the future land use map amendment from commercial to mixed use for this property. The location is 447 Alabama Avenue, and the tract size is 1.28 acres. The future land use of mixed use is compatible because adjacent properties to the east have future land use designations of mixed use. The subject property is currently within the mixed use downtown zoning district, which is consistent with the proposed mixed use, future land use designation. The recommended action, or a recommended approval, excuse me, the DRC committee recommended approval of the change in future land use from commercial to mixed use, and the recommended motion is to find the proposed change in future land use from commercial to mixed use, consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Code, based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and the exhibits.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of staff? Is the applicant here? Do they have a presentation?
The applicant is here.
Does anyone have questions of the applicant?
Yes, I do.
Sir, if you would please, and forgive me if I butchered your name.
Kwang Lam, Lamso Engineering, 1320 West Pine Street, Orlando, Florida, 32805.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
Good, sir. How you doing?
Good, good. All right, I was just curious, are you considering changing the future land use from commercial to mixed use? We're always curious about how a owner or developer plans to use the property. So it's mixed use. Do you have any idea what you will be doing?
They're planning to do a mixed use with commercial and residential on top of the commercial.
Okay, so it'd be a mixture of commercial and residential?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would it be multiple stories or one story? What are you thinking?
I think it's three-story, so it will be commercial, residential, and residential.
Okay, three stories, okay. Which was to be presented to, to Mr. Hitt and his group at a later point? Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anyone, any additional questions? Thank you, sir. Does anyone from the public here wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we find the proposed change in future land use from commercial, 0.25 floor area ratio maximum to mixed use, 1.0 floor area ratio for 15 dwellings per unit, 15 dwelling units per acre maximum, consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code, and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommend approval of the land, of the future land use amendment, based on the findings and facts presented in the staff reports and exhibits.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Norwood. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number five is quasi-judicial. It would be the special exemption to allow a general contractor office and storage yard within the MUD mixed-use downtown zoning district. To ask us, anyone had any ex parte communication on this matter?
No.
Seeing none, we'll move forward. Owner, LDK Properties LLC. Applicant, Mark R. David Hydri Inc. Location, 203 West First Street. Ms. Reed.
Roxanne Reed with the Planning and Zoning Division. The request is to approve a special exception use permit for a general contractor office and storage yard within the mixed-use downtown zoning district. The location, you can see here, is at 203 West First Street. The tract size is 2.8 acres, and the proposed use is a water damage mitigation and mold removal contractor. There is an opaque wall that surrounds the subject property, which screens the business and equipment storage from view. The applicant and the owner have agreed to screen the dumpster from view and improve the landscaping at the entrance. The applicant has submitted responses to the criteria in the code for special exceptions, and there are some conditions of approval that you see in the staff report. The Development Review Committee has recommended approval of the special exception due to the findings and conditions of approval listed in the staff report, and the recommended motion is to approve a special exception to allow a general contractor office and storage yard within the mixed-use downtown zoning district, subject to the exhibits, findings, and conditions of approval listed in the staff report. That completes the presentation.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions of staff?
I don't have a question of staff, but I would have a question if the applicant, if the applicant is here.
All right, hang on, let me get to that point. There are you. Mark Davidite Hydrodry Inc., 3615 North Apopka Island Road, Orlando, Florida.
Sir, hi, how are you?
Hey, how are you?
Good, good. I was driving around your business the other day, and it's, it looks beautiful, and it's great. You know, you're a wonderful neighbor to the church and tractor supply and everybody else.
Sobics. Sobics, yeah.
Yeah, it's all consistent, looks good.
Good.
And you have a pre-existing wall, as is documented here, around the majority of your business. But now, this dumpster you're talking about, I saw a dumpster, a green dumpster, in what I call it, a parking lot, which is outside of the wall.
That's correct.
Now, is that the dumpster you're talking about?
Yeah, I think the idea is to put an enclosure around it instead of just leaving it by itself. So like a fence or that sort of thing to screen the dumpster, if I'm correct. Yes.
Oh, that's all it is?
That's all.
So you're just, you're just going to establish a fence just for that dumpster?
Yeah.
So it's not going to be connected to your other walls, just?
That's just the dumpster.
That's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Any other questions of the applicant?
What kind of, what kind of fence you're going to put up?
I don't know yet. I would assume that probably, what would you?
It'll, it has to be an opaque fence.
I know, but I hope it's not nylon fence.
Go ahead.
I'm Ken Weber.
That meets code, actually.
I'm actually Ken Weber. I'm the LDK property owner, and maybe a nice landscape around it would be better than a fence, that we could actually screen.
You actually have to have a closure along with an opaque fence, gate.
Yes.
Yeah. You can do, you can do landscaping too, though.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. We can do both.
Yeah, no problem.
You've got a nice masonry wall around your property. It really looks nice compared to what you're used to. It really improved it substantially.
Yep.
I'd like you to carry that on with the dumpster.
We'll make it look good.
All right. Yeah, I, I think Commissioner Ryan's on, is on my page also.
Kind of duplicating what's already there.
Your masonry wall is just beautiful. It's well done. And I was just hoping for consistency. Maybe you would use a masonry wall, same color, style.
Sure, sure.
You know, rather be consistent, don't you think?
Yes, absolutely. No problem.
Just my opinion.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks again.
You're welcome. That's it.
Any more questions?
Anybody?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone from the public here wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, bring it back to the board for a motion.
I can do this one, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Dumey.
Approve, I'm making a motion to approve a special exemption, exception, to allow a general contractor office and storage yard within the mixed-use district, MUD zoning district, subject to the exhibits, findings, and conditions of the approved listing in the staff report.
Motion by Commissioner Dumey. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Onto the site plans. Number one, master plan amendment, crossroads at Kelly Park. Owners, Kelly Park Land Investments LLC, Gavin Land Services LLC, and Harzkip LLC. Applicant, Poloson Bennett LLC, care of Land Bennett PE. Location, south of Andish Road and east of Round Lake Road. Ms. Reed.
Roxanne Reed with the Planning and Zoning Division. The request is to recommend approval of the crossroads at Kelly Park master plan and amendment to the Kelly Park property master plan. This is south of Andish Road and east of Round Lake Road. The tract size is 15.27 acres. The original Kelly Park property master plan was approved in May of 2022 and approved for the development of 670 single-family homes on the north and 300 future multifamily units on the south. You can see here, this is the particular piece of this that we're dealing with tonight. A major development plan for the 670 single-family units on the north was approved by city council in August of 2022, and this application is the piece you see here that will be the multifamily development. They are, they can do a maximum of 300 multifamily units. They are asking for 280 multifamily units and seven four-story apartment buildings that are depicted here. The applicant is also including an open space program that includes a park, dog park, pool, and clubhouse, for a total of about three acres. Development Review Committee recommended approval of the crossroads at Kelly Park master plan, subject to the findings in the staff report, and the recommended motion is to approve the crossroads at Kelly Park master plan, amending the Kelly Park property master plan, subject to the findings in the staff report. And that concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Does anyone have questions of staff?
Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here.
Okay.
The applicant, please step forward.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Phil Martinez, Senior Planner with Poloson Bennett, located at 2602 East Livingston Street, Orlando, Florida, 32803. And my colleagues are happy to address any questions that you may have.
You look familiar.
This guy's vaguely familiar. Seen him somewhere before.
Absolutely. Have you been here before?
I have a question for the applicant. Is there any government loans or loan guarantees involved in this project?
I'll have to consult with my colleagues on this one. No.
Okay. Are these going to be market rate?
Yes.
Okay. I'm good.
All right. Any more questions of the applicant? Great. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Does anyone here from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, madam. Commissioner, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion for approval of the crossroads at Kelly Park master plan, amending the Kelly Park property master plan, subject to the findings in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Norwood. Motion by Commissioner Norwood. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, Platte Emerson Point Phase II. Owners, Emerson Point Phase II LLC, care of Mary Dimitri. Applicant, Appian Engineering LLC, care of Jimmy Palm PE. Location is west of Hawthorne Avenue, north of State Road 414, and east of Marden Road. Mr. Hitt.
I get the easy ones. Roxanne had the, had the fun ones. Jim Hitt, the Community Development Director. As you mentioned, this is the Emerson Point Phase II Platte. The Platte is the final stage, I guess you'd say, of the primary approvals, and it's the legal recordation of the properties. In other words, all of the master, the major site plan, and usually the construction site plans, have already gone through the approval process, and this is the last stage that, in accordance with our code, has to go through planning commission for your approval, and then also city council for their approval. And at that stage, then it goes to the, our city surveyor, who actually does the, makes sure that all the numbers and all the distances and everything are all correct, and that it matches the, the consistency for the plan itself. And then at that stage, it gets recorded in the public records at Orange County. So this is the, this is the one that's basically just to the east of Marden Road, north of the 414, and it's a fairly decent development. It's got a little bit of the residential on the exterior, and then the townhomes on the interior, meets all the codes. This is, again, the legal recordation of the property. And that's our staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Hitt. Does anyone have questions of staff? Anyone have questions for the applicant? Does anyone here from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the Emerson Point Phase II subdivision, Platte, subject to the construction site plan and reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor, and the findings in the staff report.
Thank you. Commissioner Lando. Commissioner Orlando, is motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, plat plan for Gardenia Reserve. Owners, DWPM Ventures LLC. Applicant, GL Summit Engineering, Inc., care of Jeffrey L. Summit PE. Location is southwest corner of Golden Gem Road and Sadler Road. Mr. Hitt.
Thank you again, Jim Hitt, community development director. Gardenia Reserve, this same process goes through the preliminary, or the major site plan, because it's over 25 units, and then goes to construction site plan, this is the plat for that. This is a 20.27 acre parcel on the southwest corner of Sadler Road and Golden Gem. Last stage. And that's our report.
Simple enough. Anyone have questions of staff?
Yes, I have questions.
Commissioner Ryan.
So East Sadler Road, when will that be completed?
The portion that's east of Golden Gem, or the portion that's in front of this?
Well, it's going to connect to West Sadler Road, I assume, right?
Correct, yes.
Will it connect, when will that be completed?
It'll have a four-point intersection, and that portion that's going over to the east, it'll actually go underneath the 429, and then continue out to Plymouth Sorento. So we'll have that interconnectivity that's required as part of the Kelly Park form-based code.
Who's building East Sadler Road?
That'll probably be the developers themselves. That's that 230-acre development that will be developing.
Will they do, pass their property and connect with West Sadler Road?
They'll, we don't know yet, because we don't have the, that's still going through land use and zoning.
I'm sorry?
That's still going through land use and zoning. We do not have any site plans to review for any, any type of development, other than the land use and zoning at this stage.
But the road will be completed before they start selling houses, I assume?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. And how wide will the road be?
The eastern portion will be anywhere from 58 feet to...
58 feet?
Normal road. It's a local road. Local roads are, it's built in accordance with the Kelly Park interchange development, which is part of the land development code. Village Center and the transition interchange in the employment neighborhood district, that runs anywhere from 60 to 74 feet, depending on the location of what it's, what it actually serves. Going under the road, we don't know what type of access we're going to be able to get from State Road 429, and in order to get that, but the minimum road that would probably be, would be 56 feet.
How wide is Golden Gem Road?
I do not know at this stage.
You do not know?
Nope.
You know, I sent you questions ahead of time, you know?
But you didn't ask me how wide Golden Gem was.
You're right. I did, but I did ask you when the upgrade would be completed.
And it looks like, it looks like 60 feet, based on this plat.
It's not 60 feet now.
No, that's, this is what it is, actually. The road itself is only about 20, 22 feet. It's below standard, it's below standard from anything that's in...
I mentioned it myself, it's like 19 feet.
Yeah, yeah.
When will the Golden Gem upgrade be completed?
Once we get developments to actually review, we don't know. We don't have a timeline, because we don't have any developments to review along there, other than this.
Will they be selling houses before that Golden Gem Road is completed?
It's possible.
I have a problem with that.
Well, again, this is the plat. You've already gotten all the reviews done for this. This plat, the development review, or the development itself, has up to two years to develop. They might not want to develop until Golden Gem is approved. I couldn't answer that, though.
Well, how do I, how do I get Golden Gem Road completed before they start selling houses there?
Say again, I can't, is your mic on? I can't.
How do we get Golden Gem Road up to standards before they complete houses? Because right now, the west, the north side of Golden Gem Road, there's no trucks allowed there, there's no dump.
Correct.
Why is that? Because it's too, it's substandard now, but now you want to put fire trucks, school bus, cement trucks on that road? It's not going to work, in the current state.
In the current state. This is where, this is where planning takes over, not planning as in us, but transportation works with the developers in order to get the road up to city standards.
Can you tell me what the mission statement is for the Planning and Zoning Division?
Sure, I believe everybody has that. Mission statement for Planning and Zoning Division is to support the successful development of business and residential communities in the city of Apopka, through the implementation and planning and zoning regulations that benefit and protect citizens of the city of Apopka.
So safety is a concern there. Now, on the responsibilities, can you read the first sentence on the responsibilities?
Planning and Zoning Division manages growth while protecting the environment and ensuring the availability of adequate infrastructure and school facilities, ensuring high standards of urban design, and establishing partnerships with citizens, interest groups, and other agencies in the, in the planning process.
Okay, so you see where I'm coming from. I'm coming from, safety is concerned, which is listed on the mission statements, and ensuring adequate infrastructure, which is listed on the responsibility.
Sure.
Are we doing that with this project?
We're doing it with every project. It's a continual process. It doesn't happen, everything doesn't happen exactly on time for every project, but we do assure that we have the proper infrastructure for each of the projects that we process.
Well, I'm thinking that the...
In other words, let me interrupt real quick. In other words, this project, while it does affect Golden Gem north and south, we can't make them go in and fix all of Golden Gem going all the way to the north just for this development. We know that there are other developments coming in onboard at the, after this, whether it's directly north, or just to the east, or some, there's also some properties to the south. All of them pay into the system in order to make those improvements happen. What we are, what we also are looking at doing right now is getting some cost estimates for the improvements that are needed in order to bring the road up to standards.
I don't care how it gets fixed, whether it's the county, the city, or developer, or one or more, it needs to be fixed.
Oh, we know that. We know that. Believe me, we know that, along with Kelly Park.
I just need you to make it happen.
Yes. Yep. That's, that's part of our mission statement. We do have to make this happen.
Is it possible that we're selling houses when, before Golden Gem Road is completed?
I would say probably, because right now, there is capacity on Golden Gem for those homes.
That's what I have a problem with. Okay. No more questions?
But there is capacity, the way it is right now.
I don't think I have, no more questions, thank you.
Jim, I have a question for you. The road that will be in partnership with the developer widening, going towards 429. Now, will the other developers closer to 429, and in between 429 and Plymouth Sorento Road, will they be cooperating with the widening of the road so it's consistent? So I'm just thinking about one road.
They have to.
Why?
They don't have a choice.
Otherwise, they don't get approved.
Even if it's not their property?
Well, the property, any developer that has to make, build roads, connecting to like, to Golden Gem, say between Golden Gem and Plymouth Sorento, the developers, the ones that have, you know, come in for, well, land use and zoning, like the one between the 429 and Golden Gem, and then the ones that have already been approved on the eastern side, all have to build those roads. There's no, there's no property on the north or south of where the extension of Sadler Road would be, I'll say an extension, used to rest, I'm not sure. They have to build that road, and it does have to interconnect, and it does have to have the proper intersections at Plymouth Sorento and also on Golden Gem.
Okay. I was just hoping to make sure that it was consistent, in terms of, you know, the road width, et cetera, et cetera, from Golden Gem all the way over to Plymouth Sorento, it's going to be a straight shot.
Exactly.
Right?
That's the whole, that's the whole idea behind this, is that people, if they're living in the, on the eastern side of the 429, that's where we have a lot of the subdivisions. So the, we're missing one vital piece going up to, up to the Publix right now, is the Penang Nursery. We don't know when that'll happen, it's five to 10 years. But on this western side, the plan right now, on the southeast corner of Golden Gem and Kelly Park, is to have a village center. That's the, I mean, that's the name of that district, is a village center. And that means it's not a strip center, it has to have shopping internal, and then connect, right now, the plan is to connect to some multifamily, and then connect to the employment center south of, south of Sadler. So what we want people to be able to do is not have to go out onto Golden Gem, but to be able to go onto that internal road, and then go north without having to go out onto Golden Gem, and then up to Kelly Park, or, you know, like a roundabout type thing. We want them to be able to stay internal and capture those trips versus going on the main roads.
Right.
That's what I wish I had, my subdivision.
Any additional questions?
Yeah.
I have a comment. For years, I have followed Golden Gem One, which is now capped, but the existing Golden Gem is a C and D only, allegedly, with no liner. So how is that going to affect any development on the Kelly Park side? I mean, we're just talking about Golden Gem in general, so...
What do you mean, it doesn't have what, again?
The Golden Gem, the dump, is right, that's right behind there, that was allowed to be built with no liner.
That's in the county, I couldn't answer that one, because they're the ones that run that.
I'm just kind of dovetailing this into the other one.
Well, I know it's, I know it's a construction dump, it's not a common, so typically, if they don't have a liner, that's because it's construction, they don't leach fluids.
That's right, but the liner is, I believe, the deal was 30 years.
We'd have to check with, do you know how long it's been open now, offhand? It doesn't look very full, but, I mean, I know it's been covered quite a bit. That's something, I'll have to talk with Richard Earp, who's our dump expert, and see if he can find out some information for us.
And I had given, I had gone to all the meetings and all this stuff, I tried to get it stopped, couldn't get it stopped. I mean, the liner, I wanted a liner there, but I gave all my materials to someone much younger than I, so they can follow it through the years.
Well, hopefully, we can get that thing, you know, sealed cap.
So this was just a good opportunity to jump on to, to just ask the question.
Yep. Sorry, I don't have an answer for you.
As we continue to have all kinds of activity over there, the, it looks like maybe the Rissers, some of the Rissers property is going to start to be developed.
Yeah, the Rissers did, I believe they've got, I think it's a contract to purchase or with that developer for the 200 and some odd acres. Yep.
Thank you.
Sad to see them go.
Any more questions, staff?
I just, I have one comment.
Commissioner Doomey.
I'd like, you know, last, last month, Commissioner Ryan and I had some back and forth, specifically on Golden Gem Road, and kind of the expectation that the county would be fixing it up prior to turning it over to the city for us to annex it and do all these developments. And I did a little research on it, and it doesn't appear that the county's going to do anything except turn it over to us. And then it's our baby, and we have to fix it. So what I, what I think that probably the best way forward with this is that we need to lean on the city council to get funding and get this road fixed sooner rather than later, and get, get these consistent before all these developments come in, and like I said, school buses going up and down, fire department, et cetera. So I hope that's something that we can do as a city council, and push it at that level. I don't think we can do much about it, other than, you know, recommend disapproval of these projects, but I think that's the right way to do it, is to push it at the city council level.
I agree with you.
Yeah, it's getting, it's all in the timing and how much money is it going to cost to, to fix a road, and it was not fixed in the first place.
Well, when it comes to safety and ensuring available adequate infrastructure, why are we arguing about money? I don't get it.
I'm not arguing at all. It's just, it's the process, it involves money. I mean, it doesn't involve money.
It should be a priority, in my, in my opinion.
Ready, any more questions?
Okay, back to the plan.
More comments? All right. Anyone from the public, obviously not here to speak on this matter? Bring it back to the board for a motion.
Is the applicant here?
Nope, maybe he is. You have a question, the applicant?
Yeah, yes, I do, thank you.
Do you have, do you have a, can I show, can I do a show and tell?
No.
Man, all this money, and I can't do a show and tell? Well, I got these plans, I got these plans, I'd like to, because I think this would help with regards to, oh, sorry, Jeff Summit, with Summit Engineering, 3667, Sunnington Place, Lake Mary, Florida. So Commissioner Ryan, I was, Gene forwarded me your, your comments earlier today.
I'm sorry.
Gene forwarded me your comments earlier today, so I did get a chance to look at your comments, and so unfortunately, I can't show you what I would like to show you, but what I have is I actually have what we are going to do for this project in regards to Golden Gem Road and to Sadler Road. So I think what Mr. Hitt was trying to say is, is that as these projects come forward, we dedicate right-of-way to the city for, it's really to the county right now, until the county does actually dedicate the road to the city, but we're dedicating right-of-way, we're giving right-of-way up, so that you guys don't have to, in the future, acquire, you don't have to pay for it. Because a large part of a construction of a roadway is acquiring all the right-of-way that you need to actually build what you want to build in order to have adequate public facilities. But in regards to Golden Gem Road, so we're actually, I'm widening Golden Gem Road, so it's going to be two county standards, two city standards, with turn lanes for this project. For Sadler Road, we're actually putting in a three-lane section. So for Sadler Road, along our north edge here, does this go up on the screen, Jim, or just? That was back.
And that's just going to go along your property line, I assume?
I'm sorry?
It's just going to go along your property line?
Yeah, right, along, along the north side on Sadler Road.
It's just going to stop at your property line?
Yeah, so we're, but what we're doing is, we're giving you that first piece of the puzzle, right? We're, we're building it, we're handling all the drainage, we're handling all the cost, we're putting that in for you, and so we're starting this machine moving for you to get this thing done. And that's, honestly, I've been doing this for a long time, and that's the best way to get these things done, is to do these in pieces, to work with the developers, to mandate these cross-sections, so that as each project comes forward, you can get that next piece to the puzzle. And, and you will get to the finish line. And, and I'm not saying it's not going to take, with Golden Gem Road, it's not going to take city council giving, you know, setting up dollars and acquiring some right-of-way, either for drainage or for actual pavement, but as these developments come online, and I've done a couple of these developments on Golden Gem Road, and we've given up right-of-way every time, right? So we, every one of these, we, we go as we go. And so eventually, as these all come in, you will get to the finish line, it just, unfortunately, it takes time.
The problem I have is houses are going to be sold before Golden Gem Road is up to, up to standards. East Sadler Road is going to be up to standards, and Golden Gem Road is not. It's not, it's a safety concern, it's also our responsibility to have available adequate infrastructure, and I'm not saying it's your fault.
Sure, I get it.
You know, it's the county, the city, I don't care who fixes it, it needs to be fixed.
Well, and, and part of that is, is, you know, when you spend dollars, especially when cities and counties spend dollars, you have to justify that expenditure. And part of the way you justify that expenditure is, is the facility actually failing, right? Does it need improvement? Is it 441? Is it 436? Is it the interchange that really needs to be overhauled? When you look at Golden Gem Road, unfortunately, when you actually look at the numbers, it's not over capacity. Mr. Hitt is correct when he says, because we submit traffic studies, we do this, we do the analysis when we bring this project forward.
That's going to change with all this development coming in here, it's going to change overnight. I mean, I can remember when they first put in 429, the south part of 429, there was was nobody in there, nobody on that road. I taught my daughters how to drive on that road, because there's no traffic. And now they're widening it to, to six lanes now because the traffic's so heavy.
Agreed. I mean, I get it, it used to take me forty-five minutes to get here, and it's taken me an hour and fifteen minutes today, so. But yeah, no, I understand what you're saying, it's just, as these come forward, there's, look, there's no easy button to this. There, every county, every city all over the state has dealt with this issue, and I understand your concern, and I'm, it's about a concern. I agree with you, it's just, how do we, what's the best way to approach it? And the way we've always done it in the past is to, as much as the developers can help the cities and the, and the counties move forward to get these roads widened, that's what we do, and then, yeah, you guys are going to have to, to make a commitment, and I, and I agree, I think it's a city council discussion that, you know, they've got to, I, I talked to Pam about it. I mean, Pam called me last week and said, how do we fix, you know, what do you think with Golden Gem Road? And I said, your biggest issue is how do you get the right-of-way? How do you get the right-of-way and how do you get the drainage?
You don't need that much worry about it, you're not going from.
It's the drainage, though. You got to put the drainage somewhere, you got to have ponds, you got to have retention ponds, you got to have all the systems.
Only if you go to four lane, do you need retention ponds?
I'm sorry?
Only if you have.
No, 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 any, any new widening, any new widening or required, yeah, it'll, it will. So, I mean, Pam's having those discussions, I talked to her for an hour last week about this, and it's, it is moving forward, and we're trying to do it.
Golden Gem Road is going to need retention ponds?
Yeah, Golden Gem Road will need retention ponds, yeah. I'm actually handling all the drainage for all the improvements that I'm doing on Sadler Road and Golden Gem, it's all coming into my retention ponds on this project.
You're drainage engineer?
Yep. I've got inlets and pipes, they're collecting it all, and it comes to my ponds on this project.
I mean, it doesn't need, it needs to be widened, but not that much, you need.
You ha, you have to do it, unfortunately.
Well, it has to be done one way or another.
Right.
I mean, I, I don't want to slow you up, but we have the responsibility of adequate infrastructure, not only for you, but for the public.
He's taking care of two roads for it, two such as this place.
My portion, I'm handling it.
I mean, I think the city should be able to handle this. What's the revenue, tax revenue is going to be in this? It's going to be substantial. It's going to be substantial. So, okay, well, thank you very much.
Anything else?
Any more questions, comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the Gardenia Reserve Subdivision plat, subject to the major development plan and construction site plan, reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor, and the findings in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Rondo. Motion by Commissioner Rondo, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Norwood. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Item number nine, plat of Henderson Corners, owner Aaron and Cynthia Henderson, Weeks Architecture and Design, Chair Marvin Weeks P.E. is applicant, location is sixty-three West Tenth Street. Mr. Hitt.
Thank you, Jim Hitt, Community Development Director. This is one that I wish I could show you, the, the plan for it, but because it's just a, basically a three-lot subdivision, they're not required to do a major site plan or even a minor site plan, it's just recording the, the lots because it's creating three out of one, which is the baseline for, for plating. But this one, this is, this is exactly what we've been wanting in our downtown, this is at the south side of downtown, off this, off of Tenth Street, Marvin Sanders, which is also known as Lake Avenue, different portions of the city. But they took one larger lot and is subdividing it into three smaller lots for single-family homes. And they've, they've already started work on the western lot, which is not part of this plat, it was an existing lot that was forty-nine point five feet wide down the corner, and that they're going to be doing what they're calling as Henderson Corners, and it's basically four, four very modern-looking homes with, with garages, and I believe they're all three bedrooms, and e- exactly the type of infill development project that we want in the city of Apopka, and the Hendersons are doing it. They first came in to see me about, about two years ago with this concept plan, and it was just, I, they knocked it out of the park as far as I was concerned, they're, they're almost Frank Lloyd Wright-type looking buildings, so it's, and they got a whole big corner to work with. So outside of that, we're recommending approval.
All right. Anybody have questions of staff? Anyone have questions of the applicant? All right, anyone from the public here to speak on this matter? That would be no. All right, bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the Henderson Corners plat, subject to the reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor, and the findings in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Washington. Motion by Commissioner Washington, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Last item, number ten, plat for Summit Ridge Subdivision, owner is AMH Development LLC, applicant is GL Summit Engineering, Chair of Jeffrey L. Summit, location five-nine-seven North Main Avenue. Mr. Hitt.
Jim Hitt, Community Development Director. This is another infill project, it's basically north of the Weewaw on 441, across the street from south side of Old Dixie Highway. It's an infill project again, and city staff is looking, this is, this is another one of these that it's exactly what we needed to do, do in the city of Apopka again, is, is fill in some of these with some decent-sized homes and lots for single-family development. It's our staff report, it's that quick and simple.
All right, anybody have questions of staff? Questions of the applicant? Does anyone from the public here wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
I can do this one. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the Summit Ridge Subdivision plat, subject to the construction site plan and reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor, and findings in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Doomey. Motion by Commissioner Doomey, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Norwood. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Do we have any old business? Do we have any new business?
Mr. Commissioner, Chairman, I had something.
Commissioner Doomey.
Can you slide over to the mic? We can't pick you up as good, thank you.
Sorry, I've got a reputation for speaking softly, so. No, one thing I wanted to, to bring up here was something I had mentioned last time about economic impact statements for some of these projects. Is that something that you all support, if I've worked with the city to put together maybe a template for some of these?
It's, it's very hard to do an economic report when you don't have a lot of information for the properties that are, it's actually factual for economic development. It all depends on what type of development or information you want, you know, what, what's the dollar input? How many jobs is it going to create? We don't, we don't have that expertise, we don't have an economic development person that has that type of knowledge that can create another report for something that is not needed according to Florida statutes. They tried to push this through Florida, the legislation about a year and a half ago, and it got voted down because it created too much bookwork for a development that, I mean.
Well, so what I was thinking, it wasn't as complex as what you're describing, but something like, like we had last month where the warehouses were being built out by the airport, and I said, well, how many jobs do you anticipate this bringing? And the person said, well, we have four hundred parking spots, so if you roughly extrapolate that, it'd be four hundred jobs.
And it's all rough. That's, that's the problem, is it's all rough estimates.
It is a rough estimate, but I think it would be nice, is it, from a standpoint to see maybe how many dollars and jobs are coming into the community based on these projects. That's something I would like to see.
Yeah, I, I, I'm about two classes short of getting my IDC certification for economic development. I would be very uncomfortable trying to put numbers together on something just because of parking spaces.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Just about all of these developments, other than the Amazon one and the Coca-Cola one, we did not know if they were going to develop as one project or they were in a subdivide. Most of these projects, most of these industrial projects are subdivided into multiple units that create different types of jobs, jobs, you know, the, the numbers. If, if staff was tasked to try to put a, a number on it a year from then or two years from now, somebody's going to come back and go, you were so far off on your estimates, they aren't, they're not generating that many, that many jobs, or they're generating a whole bunch of jobs and you weren't correct at that either. So you can't, it's too, it's too much to try to hypothesize how many jobs are going to be created or what the economic impact is. We can tell you how much the building permit is when they apply for their building permit, and that gives at least an idea of what the taxable value might be, but we won't know that until the building permits come in. So it's just, it's hard to extrapolate numbers when you don't have enough information to actually make an accurate prediction.
I would think that applicant would, would know how many jobs are going to be available.
A lot of these, the majority, I, I'd say three-quarters of the, of these are being developed as shells, they don't have, they don't have a, or they don't want to divulge who is going in there.
Oh, really?
Yeah. It's, it's, it's very secretive out there. The, the building that was back behind where Amazon is, between Amazon, that side of, and, and where Coca-Cola is, there's a huge building in there, and I want to say there's, gosh, there's got to be twenty garages or, or loading bays, and they would not tell us, we still don't know. They've got the building painted.
Well, you don't need to know, you, I need to know how many jobs you think it's going to be, because I got to ask them.
But they, they, I did, I asked them, well, who is it and can you tell me how many jobs it is, and how much is this going to cost? They don't tell me anything.
Yeah, because they don't have to, that's why.
Yeah.
You're not going to blame them.
Well, apparently it's a real cutthroat type thing, but all I can, I can tell you that Apopka, because of our location, they have found that we are the place to do industrial warehousing because we've got a, we've got a, a good amount of workers that can work these warehouses, we've got tremendous access to all the roadway systems. I mean, I don't know anybody that's got the 451, 44, 429, 44, the, the 414, 440, 441, Main Street rail, and is within a, one hour of the east coast, an hour and a half of the west coast, and can service all of the, the parks down south. We, we've got, the Universal Laundry is coming up here to do their laundry, and you, we're half an hour away from them. That's not very far to, to, to put in a warehouse that does laundry, and they got to pay all those rates for it, so.[1746.01]